Five o'clock, I'm going to call the City Commission meeting to order Tuesday, October 15th. As we always do, could I please, pardon? Yes, I, uh, do I say it again after it started? I don't think so. Do I say Channel 18 again? Are we good? It's on air? Okay. Thanks for looking out, appreciate that, Commissioner Warren. Can we get a moment of silence, please? Commissioner Peruzzi, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. As you all know, we have rules of civility and decorum. You've been warned. All right, we have one deletion on the agenda. Item 611 is being continued to October 28th. Do I have to read it into the record or just the item number?
No, we'll just move it.
Okay. Any other additions, deletions, changes? Fama?
I don't. No, Madam President.
Oh, okay, thank you. All righty. Items on consent, items 6.1 through 610. There's nothing. And 612 and 613. Could I get a motion, please?
Madam President, I move approval of consent.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, unanimously approved. Let's move on to our public hearing. Item 7.1, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 511024 regarding a text amendment at Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations of the Code of Ordinances, Article 7, Special Districts, Section 94-209, Mixed-Use Districts, to increase the maximum allowable height encroachment for mechanical rooms and equipment in the Curry Mixed-Use District.
Good evening, Commissioners. Linda Louie, Principal Planner for the Record. This is second reading of the ordinance, no changes from first.
Thank you. Do I have any comments or questions, Commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move approval of ordinance number 5110-24, amending the text of Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 7, Special Districts, Section 94-209, Mixed-Use District of the City's Code of Ordinances, to increase the maximum allowable height encroachment for mechanical rooms and equipment in the Curry Mixed-Use District. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the SAF report, the recommendation, recommendation of the Planning Board, and the findings that the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive planning, complies with the amendment standards found in Section 94-32 of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
We need to read the ordinance.
Oh, read the ordinance.
Ordinance.
Ordinance Number 5110-24, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the flow, the, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 7, Special Districts, Section 94-209, Mixed-Use District, to increase the maximum allowable height encroachment for mechanical rooms and equipment in the Curry Mixed-Use District, declaring this amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflicts clause, a qualification clause, and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to item 7.2, Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance Number 511524, authorizing the mayor to execute interlocal funding agreements between the City of West Palm Beach and the West Palm Beach Community Redevelopment Agency.
Hello Commissioners, Jade Green, Deputy Director of the Community Redevelopment Agency. This is the partner ordinance for Resolution 2547 with the CRA Board that we just had. Would you like me to redo the presentation?
I don't think we need to. Any questions or comments, Commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move approval of ordinance number 5115-24 on first reading. It's scheduled a second reading on October 28th, 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You have to read the ordinance again?
Oh, back to it.
Ordinance Number 5115-24, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute interlocal funding agreements between the City of West Palm Beach and the West Palm Beach Community Redevelopment Agency, where such funding has been budgeted and appropriated, providing a conflicts clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I would say third time's a charm, but this is the last item on that part of the agenda, so we'll just keep moving.
Except you're gonna call 611?
Yes. I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Were you going to call 6-11 during the regular agenda?
I thought it was being continued to October 28th.
I'm sorry, my apologies.
Okay. All righty. On to appeals. Item 8.1, Appeal on a Condition of the Historic Preservation Board's Decision in Case Number 2440 at 315 Marlborough Road, true barrel tile roof, no S tiles, to match the current roof or entire roof to white concrete tiles, circa 1962.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Benjamin Salata, City Historic Preservation Planner. I'd like to invite your applicant to come up and present her case, and I will follow up the free button.
Point of order, if I could direct a question to our city attorney. This is a quasi judicial proceeding, do we have to?
It's, it's an, it is a-
An appeal?
It's an appeal, and you're gonna hear it anew. You will base your decision on testimony and evidence submitted to determine whether or not it meets the requirements, so it is and isn't quasi judicial, you know what I mean? It's, it's an appeal of a decision, but you will have to take evidence. We could, we can swear in the witnesses, so you have sworn witnesses, and you'll base your decision on the evidence that you hear this evening.
And that was my next question, is, is that it is kind of sort of quasi judicial, and we'd have to swear in the witnesses as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you swear the witnesses?
Would everyone wishing to speak on item 8.1 please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. My name's Rachel. So, the English is not my first language, but I will try my best. Please be patient with me. My family, eight-year-boy, Edwin's sitting there, my husband Noble, and we have been living in this Prospect Park neighborhood for almost, more than 10 years. Edwin only eight years. So, um, my eight-year-boy, and he's attending local elementary schools called Palm Beach Public, and he's working hard. Right now, he is, you know, entered the advanced orchestra, school orchestra band, and also he loves to play baseball, and is also a proud scout, and the, the middle, that picture that, you know, right here, ladies, my mother-in-law, and she's 82-year-old, you know, widow, and we like to move her, live with us, and take care in her aging years. That's why we need more living space, and also, I don't wanna look at my husband. My husband have been, you know, been, also being a, then, scouted and leader, and also been coaching little league, league baseballs in Forbes Park quite a few years, and this year his team is one of the best team. Okay, so, so anyways, my, my, my son, Edwin, he loves to have more like a private, you know, music pass, practice room, and my husband, my mother-in-law will move in, live with us, so we propose like a 600, six, a small little addition, and I'm very grateful it's been approved, but however, that's one, I think it's very unfair conditions put on our plan, and that's why we're here to appeal with all of you, and hope, and my husband will go through the appeal. Well, I know, we'll keep it simple. Okay, sure. Thank you.
Here. I thought this meant it go up and down.
No, that's, I don't know. That's just a, no.
How did you make it go up and down?
Just go the square.
Well, it's not going now.
No, no, it goes down here.
Oh, I see. All right, I hope you can see this. Does it appear on your screens in front of you? Oh, great. All right, what we're appealing is, we're asking the commission to overturn what we feel is an unfair condition. The condition at issue is true barrel tile roof, no S tiles, to match current roof or entire roof to white concrete tiles. Just an important piece of information here, our, our house currently has-
Could you expand it?
Has S tiles.
Could you expand the, or, just so we could see a little bit bigger on the, on our screen?
Like that?
No.
Does it look blurry to anyone else, or is it just blurry to me?
No, it's not blurry. There we go. Okay, great. Thank you.
An important piece of information you need to know for the hearing is, we currently have S tiles on our roof. We have concrete S tiles.
You're gonna have to, when you speak, you're gonna have to speak into the microphone.
We brought, we brought the S tiles with us. They're concrete S tiles, and I can, if you're interested, I'll put them right here for you. One important, reason I bring up our current S tile roof is that the historic staff has a standard. One of their standards is match current roof. You can see that our- You can see the addition that we're proposing on this page on the right. Our current home is on the left. The right is a second story. We're just simply asking to meet, Matt, meet the, to match current roof, which is historic board's own standard. You can also see another thing to look at, is it's really difficult to see our addition, and especially the roof from the road. The reason I bring this up is, it's not perhaps wildly important, honestly, for the neighborhood, but it is for us. The barrel tile costs three times as much as the S tile. We're a middle-class family. The neighborhood itself is rapidly gentrifying. We were there before it gentrified to this degree. The three time, if the roof is three times as much as real expense to us. The, the flat S tile, or rather, the flat concrete tile, is also, would be quite a problem for us, because if we were gonna conform it, we'd have to take off the roof we have, which would be a wasteful and also a large expense. Point two that we're gonna be making here is the historic staff claims that the S tiles are inappropriate, but this ignores the fact that in April 20th of 2009, that, that was the date that our home was made a contributing structure. It had this very roof on it. The historical board back in 2009 felt it was appropriate and worthy of present preservation. I don't see why it changes now. Number three of the point we want to make is Prospect Park, Southland Park, Historic District, contains many contributing masonry vernacular homes, our homes are masonry vernacular, with concrete S tiles. I'll show you in a bit that there's at least five homes within just a few blocks of our home that are masonry vernacular with concrete S tiles. Our home, it should be noted, is not minimal traditional, according to these listing. I've kind of gone over this a bit, but this is a comparison of our home now with the addition. The addition is, is all approved, and we, we do really appreciate the historic boards' and staff's help with that, but this is a worthwhile appeal for us, because it's a large expense involved. Historic facts for our home, as I was saying, this home was made a part of the historic district contributing in 2009. You can look on the extreme left picture of this. This was taken in 2009, not by us, before we bought it. It clearly has the same roof on it that it does now. We've since painted the roof, trying to make it look nicer, but it had concrete S tiles. You can see the, when we bought the house, the inspection in the middle establishing that this roof was clearly S tiles when, 2009, when it was made a contributing structure, which is certainly a, a big fact in our appeal. We wanted to kind of fact-check the historical staff statement. There are quite a few masonry vernacular style residents with concrete S tiles with the Prospect Park, Southland Park neighborhood. We point out two here. This is 240 Marlborough Road on the top here. It has concrete S tiles. It's the same house, it had a nice paint job and renovation. It's the same house down below. Next page, 233 Greenwood, concrete S tiles. It's also similar to our home, masonry vernacular, even painted in a, in a similar way. 3214 Washington Road is masonry vernacular. All of these homes were also made, were made in 2009 into contributing structures by the historical board, apparently in an attempt to preserve houses with disappearance, which we want to keep. 3008 Washington Road, it's masonry vernacular style, also that kind of roof style. This historic staff does include a couple pictures in their motion about minimal traditional. Neither of these homes, I should note, on the left side here are from our neighborhood, but they do show a minimal traditional home, which isn't what our home is, with concrete flat style roof. We looked at, and my wife took captured photos of, two of these traditional minimal style homes in our neighborhood. At 3218 Alton Road, we have one with a metal roof. At 145 Edgewood, we have one with those flat asphalt roof. This next page, I believe it's page eight, we wanted to show you a map of where we found these homes. The green homes are, and we gave you pictures of four of those, actually five here that we found, our homes, which are mercy, which are the same designation as ours, masonry vernacular homes, and they have S tile roofs, concrete. On the next two pages, we just simply want to establish and give you evidence that concrete S tile roofs aren't new. They're not something that suddenly came in to the building trades after 1961, where the green card, which is one of the staff's exhibits, and they were in existence when our home was built in 1952. They come in many shapes and styles, and it's important to note, this, one of the stronger arguments that the staff is making is that on the green card from the 60s, there was a roofing designation made, and it says tile, concrete, and it gives a couple checks. It's, it's almost seems like the staff kind of ran with the idea that concrete must be flat white tiles. They're not. There's many different forms of concrete tile. Our tile is made of concrete, it's not clay. It's more sturdy, it's, it's less expensive, which are two historical features of our kind of home. They're sturdy homes, built for middle-class families coming home from the war, and that's what we're, we're preserving. That's what we want to preserve in our, in our addition. My wife compiled a lot of this, really went into some research, and you're welcome to read all this. I'm, I'm not gonna read it to you, but it establishes that, that these concretes, tiles and concrete F styles have been in existence for quite a while. The, on the upper right of this page, you'll see today's roof styles have concrete Spanish, concrete double S. There's your flat tile and your clay, and a clay Spanish tile. This kind of style and things that are used in our roof, they come in many forms, not just flat white concrete. I'm not sure where, where the staff was going for this, but they have some records, and it seems that our home doesn't have a, a lot of records, building records. This, the staff did a search from September 1st, 2006, to May 11th, 2015, about our house, perhaps with the point being that, that this roof wasn't installed in those periods with a license, but not only is it highly, just unlikely someone in the, in the middle of a neighborhood like ours is gonna put in an illegal roof, or a roofer would agree with, would agree to that. That might be not the point. The more, more important thing is that in their own, in the, on, you can see on the right here, this is our home in 2008, and it clearly has the very tiles we're discussing, so they obviously wouldn't have been installed in this period they're talking about anyway. Not only can you see it from 2008, I agree he did a search two years before, but it's clearly not a new roof. This thing has been up there for a while. You can see it does not look spanking two, two years new. You know, and the, and it's, it's frankly a little unfair to expect us to have building records from a house before we bought it. It's, should be the government's responsibility to have these records, and it's a little unfair to, to use that against us. So that's, that's our evidence, yes. So that's, that's our evidence that we're presenting today. What we wanted to remind you of, the issue here, it seems a little petty, but this is a 600 square foot addition. We're really pushing it, frankly, to be able to afford it. We need the materials to be reasonable and within our budget, and we also want to match the house that we have. It would be, it would just look odd to have barrel or white tiles on the addition. We, in no way are we gonna be able to budget, nor should we be expected to, ripping the roof off of the home we have now. That's unreasonable. I, it's, I would agree, it's not necessarily a legal standard here, the budget, but that is honestly what's at issue for us, but I think that we've, we, we've argued that this is clearly within the historical board's standards. They want us to conform it to the roof that was there, and the roof that's historically been there, and we're doing that. We're, we're not arguing against putting up the very same roof that's historically been on this home, and is on so many other homes in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, Benjamin Salata presenting, it was HB Case 24-40, this is the appeal. Much of what the applicant said is true. We have no permit records of this roof dating back. We had billing look at it, I looked at it. The roof is relatively new and well-maintained, but it is architecturally inappropriate, and we have no legal means to know this was even approved in the first place, both from a certificate appropriateness and as a permit. So, doing some research, this is post-war architectural, minimalist traditional home. You can see the picture, the middle's very close to the applicant's. We went through the green cards. We do establish this was a concrete tile roof. White barrel tile roof is mostly ceramic in nature. Concrete is, does happen, but it's rare, and it's more of a modern construction, not traditional. So, at this time, through the 20s to the 50s, concrete tile roof was used on it. It is hardy, it is sturdy. The applicant, I understand, has a good roof, but it has, according to them, a very old roof, a very well-maintained roof. So, presenting this, this was a condition placed by staff, gave me the ability to either restore it to its original condition, or blend it to something new, as far as the regular tiles, but these S tiles are highly unfavored by the board. They look relatively new, they look nice, but they don't look historically appropriate, and that is by modern construction standards. And that is the end of my report. Any questions?
I, I do, and then I'll pass it over to Commissioner Peruzzi. Why are you, what's the conversation? They're saying that their house is different than the minimal traditionalist, so you got, you don't agree that-
I don't agree. It's pretty much spot-on. The size of the house, the scale of the house, the materials in the house.
Okay, and you kept mentioning concrete, but aren't those concrete, what they're trying, the S tiles?
I have not seen the tile on that box before, but all the examples in my office are terracotta.
Okay.
They're all ceramic.
But if it was, would it make a difference?
I don't know in 1970 if it would. Generally, they'd note it differently during this time. Obviously, it's a second-hand information, but it would say barrel, or other words, Spanish on the roofing composition, not concrete, but once again, this record is 50 years old, so I have no firsthand knowledge of it.
Okay, thank you.
It was a logical guess.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on that same line of questioning. Actually, I have two questions, but following up on that, that President Ward asked if it would make a difference, and I know that one of the options is to go back to a concrete tile roof, and I know that concrete tile roofs are traditionally those flat, white, concrete tiles that we're all used to from, what, the 70s or 60s, 70s. If that S tile that's there is concrete, would it technically meet the qualifications of a concrete roof?
Possibly. I, I don't know how to answer that. I mean, it could be a concrete slab, but it doesn't mean it's the architecturally appropriate roof. So, is it concrete at that time? I can say, I can't answer that question factually.
What about the fact that they purchased this house with these S tiles on it, and the fact that subsequently the house was declared contributing? Is there any validity to their argument that, hey, we bought this house this way? It wasn't made contributory to, contributing to the historical architectural requirements until after they purchased it, and that it had that, that tile roof on it? It had the S tiles already on it?
Well, it's possible they added, staff and board does not add any houses contributing. It's always done through a third-party contractor service. They may have chose to add it as a contributing property based solely on its age, at 50 years old, to save the house from demolition and possible reconstruction or something else, but once again, that is speculative.
One more question, follow-up? Is it reasonable to expect this family to have to take up the roof that's there in order to make it matching, the whole, the whole property matching? Because right now, all they're trying to do is make it look nice and make it look matching, and that if they do a white concrete tile, it's not going to be matching, which means if, if they go with a white concrete tile, or the terracotta barrel tile, they're going to have to, if they want it to be matching, they're gonna have to rip up the existing roof that presumably is still good. Is it reasonable for us to require them to do that to meet the-
Is it reasonable for us to require them to do that to meet the technical requirements of our historic preservation code?
That's a good question. I wish I had a 100% answer, but anytime there's renovations or expansions, alterations house, generally there's roofwork. So I thought it's an opportunity to make a correct roof on this house. To believe that a 20-year-old roof will naturally blend into a new roof is quite a feat, especially when it's at a higher level. There was also an outbuilding or parcel on this, which was not part of their application, was not considered in our determination. So it's, to me, it's a gray area, and it's why we're here today. Historic Preservation Board was not sold on this either way. It's a tough situation. It's why the applicant's here to appeal. It's why I put the condition, and it's why we're having this discussion.
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you. You stated they chose to make this a contributing structure. Who's "they"?
"They" is a third-party service that Historic Preservation contracts to reevaluate and reassess historic districts, normally on a 15-, 20-year rotational basis.
Did the family have any input on whether or not their home was designated historic?
Any individual homeowner does not have input to the determination of something's contributing or non-contributing.
To go back to my first question, so if the house was the masonry, I don't remember the full term that he used, would that change your opinion on the S-tile? Because he was showing the other houses in the neighborhood, and I'm just looking at the standards about, you know, what looks the same along and was built with. So how do we reconcile if there's other homes that are using the same tile? And I've been in that neighborhood and seen a lot of those houses do look historic and have that historic feel. So how do you remedy that?
Historic looks at each house individually. We tend to group them together. There's always variations, alterations through the course of 50-, 60-year life. So we try to judge each house and individual merits. Are there other examples in the city? Yes. Were they conforming or legal? I don't know.
Okay. Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you. I'm trying to remember a past case that we had, and if I remember correctly, one of the considerations was what's visible from the street. Is that still a consideration in a case like this?
Absolutely.
As to what's visible from the street and whether it conforms with the period architecture?
Yes, sir.
And in follow-up then, would you agree that the second-story roof that's set back behind the original structure isn't really all that visible from the street, is it? Is that a consideration for us here today?
I believe it is, but the house itself is not visible. There's, to me, there's some foliage on it. Photographing it, documenting it was difficult for the initial report. Will it be seen from the back or from the sides, from other neighbors? Possibly. Will they object? I don't know.
Commissioner Fox? Thank you. If they decided not to move forward with the addition, would there be any issues with them keeping the roof on the original house? Or now that it's kind of already come out to be discussed, are you recommending that their original roof be replaced as well?
No, I would not recommend that, just with the changes and alterations.
So we're fine with them leaving the roof as it is, but if they wanted an addition, they have to have a different roof, and then they'd also have to redo the roof on their original structure?
If they submitted a permit for a new roof, replacement roof, I would probably condition it as, on their existing structure, condition as try and replace the roof with something more conforming to the architecture. And this is not exclusive to this house. We do this all the time in the city with better roof applications, and we make sure, we try to make sure every application for roof, windows, so on, so on, and so forth is in juxtap, in style with the house or the architectural style.
Did you say the roof, the original roof is 20 years old?
On this house? I don't know how old it is. There's no permit records on it, on this house. The only record we have is from the 1970s. Is it feasible for barrel tile roof to last so long and look that nice with a lot of maintenance? Yes. Without, I really don't know.
Commissioner Warren, did you have another?
Yes. Commissioner Peduzzi, my recollection of the previous situation that we voted on, it was, they came before us, and what they ended up doing is they had the visual component. So where it says here, the new features shall match the old design and color, texture, and other visual qualities, they came in with product that matched the visual qualities that existed in the structure where they were making the addition. Where they differed is where it says where possible materials. So it was updated materials in order to be a cost savings, but there was no change to the appearance of the addition to the home, and this one is clearly different. And I think that's where the, where I find the difference between that situation and this one.
Commissioner Peduzzi?
While I would agree that it may be distinguishable in that particular case, if we're looking at visual appropriateness, I think that putting a white concrete tile roof on, which would be permitted, is certainly going to be more visually, I don't know, it's not going to be as visually conforming, I would think, if they put a white concrete tile roof on this addition because of the terracotta-colored S-tiles that are currently on the existing structure. I would argue that, I'm not going to argue, but I would think that if you put either the terracotta barrel tile on the addition, it probably would match fairly well with the S-tile that's currently there because it's in the same color palette, from what I'm seeing at least. But I'm not so sure that putting the S-type colored concrete on there would really make that much of a difference visually because it's starting 20 feet up in the air, presume, or 10 feet up in the air on a second story, and it's set back from the road. I'm just not sure that you'd be able to identify or signal a difference between the terracotta-colored S-type tile and the terracotta barrel-style tile from the street, especially if there's a lot of foliage around.
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you. My concern is compliance with the standard. I think that it's the homeowner's decision what direction they go in, whether they choose the S-style or the concrete block or anything else, as long as it fits within what the standard states here. I don't think that it's up to us to say what they should do or make that decision for them. I think that that's up to them to decide which way they move forward. My role here would be to determine whether or not it's within what the standard is set, the standard that's set here on the paper.
Which standard did the Historic Preservation Board impose the condition on, under?
Nine and 10.
Nine and 10?
Yes. What, nine and 10? You can't, you gave us handouts, Attorney Rothenberg, so we're...
In the code, it's I and, little I and J, I believe, as opposed to a nine and a 10.
And you know what? That's interesting, because I actually, you know, was looking at that, new additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction shall not destroy historic materials that characterize the property. But you're asking for historic materials that aren't even on the property.
I'm sorry, say again?
The condition is saying that new additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction shall not destroy historic materials that characterize the property. There are, those historic materials that you're asking for aren't even on the property right now. And the new work shall be differentiated from the old and shall be compatible with the massing size and scale and architectural features to protect the historic integrity of the property and its environment. You're adding the same materials that are already there. It was designated a historic house with that material on there. So it actually seems like, that's why, when I looked at that standard, I was like, well, it seems like it's complying just based upon that standard right there.
It could be interpreted as that, as an existing condition. I understand that some people feel that way, including the applicant. But the roof itself, I see the tile here now is very different than what was manufactured by new standards. There's pigeonholes in it to nail them down. I just don't believe the new manufactured tile will be compatible with this from what I can see here. Is it destroying historic materials? I don't know what that roof is outside this tile. We just know it's, doesn't match it architecturally, and there's no permit history on it. We don't know if it was ever placed illegally and was ever reviewed by city staff.
Commissioner Peduzzi?
Commissioner, or President Ward, I do agree with your comment, but to Commissioner Warren's point, you know, we're sitting here today as an appellate review board. I think that we're well within our right to find that there can be an exception to the rules that are in place, that this was a structure that existed with this roof prior to being designated a contributing structure. And every day up here on this board, we make decisions allowing developers to, giving developers waivers of technical requirements in our code. So I think that we're fully within our power as a commission, sitting in an appellate capacity, to say that this should be approved without conditions.
Is that a motion?
Hold on. Were there two conditions that are being appealed or just the one?
Just the one condition, tile selection.
There are two conditions, so if you're approving the appeal, it's only as to the roof material.
So, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that your record is clear, that when you do make a motion, we're only talking about one of the two conditions that the board imposed, at least by virtue of the background information provided.
The condition that we've been talking about, the roof tile, right?
Correct.
Okay. I think we're all on the same page on that.
I have a motion if you want.
Well, I should have jumped in on a little bit. Do you guys have any more comments? Commissioner Fox, Commissioner Warren? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for approval without conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. You said conditions with a plural S, without the condition that the roof material be changed to a white concrete or a barrel tile.
We have two options here. One is motion for approval with conditions, and that means true barrel tile with no S-tile, or a motion for approval without conditions, which is approve the certificate of appropriateness without the condition that true barrel tile be used. So I'm making a motion for approval without conditions, approve the certificate of appropriateness without the condition that true barrel tiles be used, is my motion.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Fox, did you second that?
Yes.
Yes.
And I just have one question. Does this mean that they, with this motion, that they could just get any, or they would have to go and get still approval for the S-tile?
I believe the S-tile will be approved. This is the only condition in the application. They can submit their own tile selection.
I just want to make sure, because it doesn't really say in the motion, okay, then you have to, obviously, in, you know, in reality, they would want to go and use their own, but I just want to make sure that was clear. That's clear?
I believe it's clear.
Okay.
Yeah, their application would have been for a particular type of material. The board said, yes, we approve your addition, but you must use this other material. So the application was for a particular material.
Okay.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you.
All right. We have reached our comments from the public, and it looks like we have two, Mr. Kurt Green and Mike Schmidt. Mr. Green, if you could make your way up to the podium, please, and state your name when you get there.
My name's Kurt Green. I'm at 403 South Sopadilla Avenue, West Palm Beach. My comment concerns a release from the mayor's office concerning the Chill in the City activity this Saturday, which is to celebrate the conclusion of public imprint about the waterfront changes. And this release, to read from the release, says, "This concluding event responds directly to community feedback, which greatly indicates a desire for more vibrant activities among the waterfront. However, the survey that the city did, Your Waterfront, Your Way, the majority of the respondents voted for, 'I love it now, how it is, don't change a thing.'" So this comment in the release saying that there was a great desire for more vibrant activities, and is an error based on the survey done. So I think this was probably an error that the staff made. Otherwise, it would indicate that they were trying to mislead the public as to the events of, as to the community imprint. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Appreciate it. Mr. Schmidt? Come up and state your name.
You know, I know this issue, this I'm referring to...
Could you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, I'm Mike Schmidt.
Thanks.
Yeah, just 315 Hibiscus Street. Anyhow, this refers to, gosh darn it, where are we here? 6.11, and I think this is a proposal having something to do with funding between the city, the DDA, CRA, and whatnot. And I just, I know this, Commissioner Fox is not going to be addressed until next commission session, I believe, but can you just sort of explain in layman's terms what the proposal is all about? Because it's just kind of confusing to somebody who's not familiar with these terms, what the resolution proposes.
This is your time to speak, so we can't...
I'm sorry?
It's your time to speak, so we don't respond during your comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I didn't realize.
Until you get, you have three minutes.
Well, no, it was just a question, that's all I have to say.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I don't know, Commissioner, or Mondo, if you want to...
Yeah, I mean, I could explain it to them after the meeting, if that's okay.
Okay. Perfect. Awesome. All right, thanks. All right, well, those are all the comments we have, so move to the comments on the day. Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't expecting to go first. Someone else go first?
Sure. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. My only comment I mentioned before, but Hamburger Haven will have the grand reopening this Friday at 3:00 PM. They are located on Tamarind. I was also looking for their address, but it's around 8th Street and Tamarind. Hopefully, you all can join us. And Tamarind Avenue is now open. If you haven't been there yet, it looks amazing, and it will be great to be, see you all at the grand reopening and the grand reopening of Tamarind. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren?
Thank you. On November 19th, Digital Vibes is hosting their 10th year anniversary celebration at Lagerhead Marine Life Center. 6:00 PM. Tickets can be purchased at digitalvibes.org. And if you cannot make the event, there are sponsorship opportunities available. Digital Vibes works to empower youth in diverse and underserved communities through dance, fitness, technology, and the arts. There's a free car wash to all those who attend MINT ECO's Hunted Car Wash and Trick-or-Treat on October 30th and 31st at 5577 Oka Tobi Boulevard from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Family-friendly hours are 5:00 to 7:00. Okay, wait a minute. The event is from 5:00 to 9:00. Family-friendly is from 5:00 to 7:00, and the scary hours are from 7:00 to 9:00. All donations will go to benefit the West Palm Beach Police Fund. And I appreciate MINT ECO. They have different events throughout the year that are fundraising events to go to fund local organizations in the city of West Palm Beach. To those impacted by Hurricane Milton and the devastating tornadoes that resulted during the storm, there's a major declaration across our area, in the Palm Beaches and the Treasure Coast. Please remember that for anyone affected, to register for FEMA assistance by visiting disasterassistance.gov or by calling 1-800-621-3362.
Thank you for the information. Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you. It's not very often that I completely blank out there, so I appreciate you working with me there. I did want to mention the passing of Judge Ira Robb, who served on many committees in the city of West Palm Beach. I served with Judge Robb on the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee probably for six or seven years. He was a constant figure in service in West Palm Beach, and he will be missed. Also, Marty Perry... Also, Marty Perry, who just recently passed away as well. Marty has been up in front of us numerous times, and we've all had the opportunity to work with him. Such a strong, such a gentleman, such a great guy to work with. And I know that my father had an opportunity to work before I was elected with Marty, and Marty always was willing to help with charitable endeavors that my father was involved with. And then when I became elected, to be able to work with him, although not being able to always agree with him, but even when I didn't agree with him, he was always agreeable, and he will be missed. Likewise, with regard to the storm, the tornadoes that came through, some of them were right around our western communities, especially Wellington and Palm Beach Gardens on the North Lakeside. I did have an opportunity to speak with Palm Beach Gardens mayor right after it to see if they needed any assistance, and she was very thankful that we reached out and also said that they were just very grateful that there was no fatalities or serious injuries. So we got through this one fairly unscathed with just some property damage, but it could have been much worse. So I think we have to just keep that in mind when you have storms like hurricanes, and although we're not getting a direct hit, these tornadoes, you know, we had Kansas-style tornadoes in the western communities of West Palm Beach, and we just need to remain vigilant. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have two comments. Next Wednesday, the 23rd, we have a follow-up meeting about the Broadway mixed-use district, the final findings, and that will be at the Manatee Lagoon at 6,000 North Flagler Drive. And then another reminder about the Fall Festival that Parks and Recreation is hosting at the Gaines Park Community Center. It's Sunday, the 27th, in the afternoon, lots of children come. Please bring your kids, or if you want to sponsor, reach out to Parks and Recreation. And that is it. Have a great night, everybody. Meeting adjourned.